I think we need to set the bar and we need to be the grownups in the room that make some of those decisions. And like Eric said, I think that it's something that should evolve from our curriculum department.
Okay.
Caroline.
I think it has to be a discussion between our curriculum department and Pine View. I don't, I really don't believe it rises to the level of the board. It doesn't. But I really think that Pine View has to get its act together and figure out what it wants to do, what it wants to be. And the only way you can do that is by parent input and working with the staff at Pine View. Lobbying the board and sending us emails about what they, each individual parent would like to do is not the way to go.
I would agree with that, right? You know, I think over time, conversations taking place, the states weighed in on a couple of occasions when they've said, "You have to let," you know, "the virtual programming." You know, I think, I think a lot of people felt like, you know, or still feel like, obviously, it's still a highly ranked school and it's all, you know, they do incredible things there. Incredible things at Pine View. It's a wonderful opportunity that, you know, this district provides. But the state weighed in, we were, we did not like the idea of the virtual programming being placed at Pine View because it was a way to sidestep gifted curriculum. And we argue, you know, the argument we made was that if you're a 2 through 12 gifted school, then we would prefer that gifted education be taught on the Pine, or it take place on the Pine View campus. The state ruled that through statute that those students have access, just like everybody else does, to virtual programming. We would argue it's a magnet program, that's what we did argue, it's a magnet program, and we want to set the standard. We want to set a standard that meets a certain criteria for that school, just like we do in our other magnet programs. I mean, to get in the VPA program at Booker High School, I trust, trust me, if I went in and told them I wanted to be in their voice program, I probably wouldn't get it.
I don't think so.
I can guarantee it.
Take probably out of that statement.
Let's take probably out of that statement. But, but the reality is, we have so many options and opportunities in this district. So sometimes, you know, it does come down to what does that mean to graduate from the VPA program at Booker High School? What does it mean to graduate from the, from Pine View with 26 credits and additional requirements and foreign language? You know, students take a highly rigorous program of studies. But the reality is, the state said, "We have to allow the virtual programming," which to me, I still, I struggle with. If you're going to have a magnet program, then how does that fit into it? But it is what it is. So we work with what's, the hand that's dealt us, and we continue to build a program around the requests of the administration at Pine View, number one. We work to build around the requests, a lot of feedback, a lot of input from parents at Pine View. And I think that, I think the Pine View administration's been resilient, they've been, they listen to the concerns, they push back where they need to, and they allow things to happen where they can. I don't disagree. I think that it would be a good idea to go through the exercise through a committee at Pine View. I think what I would like to see is the committee at Pine View with the support of district staff, but a community or an org, a group at Pine View to go through the exercise of asking their community. I mean, there's thousands of people that have graduated from Pine View that like to weigh in on that conversation. What does it mean to have a Pine View diploma? And so if it means that we are going to require students to take, you know, four, five, six AP courses, whatever it might be, you know, we've added the AP Capstone program there, which is an incredibly strong program. So I think it would be a good idea, in my mind, the exercise would be Pine View would present to the district, and we would certainly do a board presentation on what that, I think it would be important that you all hear a board presentation on, "This is what collaboratively we've come up with." And the input would come from parents, students, former students, this community, people move here from all over the country to go to Pine View, as well, they do Oak Park too. I mean, it's an important piece of what we do here in this, this school district. So I think we have a way we could make that happen. I think we could set some things in motion, and it'll take some time, and we need to be patient, because where we land, we need to land in the right place and make sure we get all the input we need.
Well, I think that we need to land in the right place, and I agree with you there. I think that's important. But I think we have some students who are in the middle of something. We have some students who have, think that they can get a dual enrollment degree, and now they think that these courses that they thought were going to be available on campus are not going to be on campus. So we have an absolute document, perhaps, that needs some flexibility to maybe help those students who are in the middle of something get
Correct.
Get forward and get, and get some help or get some flexibility with their plan, if they're already in the middle of a plan, but maybe we make a decision after that, so that, that we do
I would agree with that.
I know this math thing, we had these math classes and now we don't have them.
Right.
So I think we have to look at maybe those students that are in the middle of thinking that they had dual enrollment and they don't, so that they are upset with us, because that seems to be the biggest number of letters that I read. And so I think we have to look at maybe some transition too, but I think we need to look at what it is
Right.
That Pine View is. And Pine View should be special, it should be different from other schools. And if, in fact, it's not as flexible, then we have other great schools that students can go to.
Agreed, agreed.
Shirley.
I agree with what you're saying there, because I do think we need to look at that and have, have those options out there, but actually say, "This is what, this is what we've got for Pine View, this is what it is." And, you know, so, so that we know upfront exactly where we're going to be going with this program.
Understand that, you know, based on the fact that what happened recently with the, you know, the dual enrollment at Pine View and restricting access, we're still teaching two of the math courses on campus. The SCF has been a great partner over the years, and I don't, you know, I think we need to understand that their concerns are their concerns, but, and we're going to work with them to create the best opportunities we can for the students at all of our schools, including Pine View. And just understand that students have access to online, the online English courses are available to our students. The three upper-level math courses are going to be taught at SCF, and our students would have access to those there. And we're looking at additional, we're looking at additional opportunities for those students. But the other thing is, you know, when we, parents brought concerns about ninth and 10th graders, there are no 6 through 8th graders that have requested coursework at, dual enrollment coursework at Pine View or any other school in our district. But when the request came for ninth and 10th graders to have access to these, these courses, because they've already started that, as you said, they, they've already started this dual enrollment program, and to have access to that, SCF made allowances outside of this articulation agreement. They're not going to change the articulation agreement, they are saying for one year, these students in ninth and 10th grade will have access to the online version, which we've had a parent speak at the parent meeting the other night, the open meeting we had the other night. The parent spoke very highly of that curriculum and that program, she said it was the best online English or curriculum they've had. So SCF's been a partner in this, they have their concerns, and we have been making requests of them through Catherine and Penny to be flexible, and they have been flexible. It's a one-year situation that we anticipate working through this year with SCF.
And I also think that, you know, once you define what a diploma from Pine View looks like, that we may be able to go back to the state and ask for an exemption from that requirement for virtual. I mean, they can have a blanket statement, but then we can say, "Well, wait a minute, you know, this is the number one school in Florida, number seven in the country, we've got this curriculum, and, you know, we ask for an exemption from that." Because they are not the end-all and be-all, you can ask for, to be, their decision to be overridden. And those people change too.
Sure.
And I don't think we're going to have a lot of other articulation agreements with University of Florida or FSU, or what was it we once were asked by Pine View parent to have an articulation agreement with FIU in Miami?
Yeah.
I thought that was a little bit much, but I think, I think we're on the right track.
Cut you off.
But we like Florida, don't we? Okay. So thank you all very much, appreciate it. Next up, we have Facilitron Building Rental Process, that sounds ominous, with Scott Limpy and Jody Dumas. Come on down.
It is, same thing. It might be, yeah.
I don't wish you had to sit here by yourself. I thought they were going to join you.
Well, good morning, everybody. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come in front of you this morning. So like many of the ideas that come out of facilities, construction, planning, they're normally not mine, they're of somebody else, and I just get to bring them forward to you. So I've got Assistant Director of Facility Services, Don Hampton, with me here today, who's kind of brought this to, to the point that you're going to see it this morning. So over the last several years, and Scott and I have talked about this a number of times, and we know that one of the areas of improvement we have across the district is our building rental process. Many of you may be familiar with the process, but it's a decentralized process whereby every principal in the district has a responsibility for managing their own rental program. At the district level, we do little more than kind of define the rental rate and bring it to you once in a while for approval, to make sure we're covering costs. But other than that, all the responsibility for the rental process is at the school site. And so it's very cumbersome on school staff, on principals, to have to deal with people coming into the school, calling and wanting to rent facilities. It's something that's on their plate that shouldn't be. And over the years, we've tried to figure out, how do we, how do we fix this for principals? And it was never a good solution, other than trying to add staff to try and manage all of this, because that's, you know, once it's decentralized, everybody's handling a piece of it. When you start to bring that central, there's a lot of building rental that goes on in the district, and so that's a lot to handle. So we never had a good solution. And having a decentralized process, a couple of big issues, one of which is on our plates today, safety and security of campuses. We never know across the district, and Michael Andreas had talked to me many times about this, is we don't know who's on campus, we don't know who are renting buildings. The only people that know that are sites, and so we have trouble supporting that. And it's not easy for safety and security to say, and be able to place people and monitor what's going on around the district, and we just have no insight into that process. The other thing, for renters, they can, they can shop our schools, and it's very difficult when, when they can go to multiple schools and sometimes get a different price for the same activity they're trying to have on campuses. Because some of the, some of the rentals are open to interpretation, in terms of what we're renting and how much we're charging for some of that. So it puts principals in a bad spot, where they could get a call and a price from one school, and then they go to a similar school and get a price that's a little bit different. So it, we've had principals get in a position where it's, it's been awkward, and we've had to try and help them through that. And the other piece that kind of has been a problem with our rental processes, you know, we charge a rate, several years ago, the board had said that, "What we want to do is cover costs, we don't make a profit, but we want to cover our costs." But because everything's so decentralized, the money flow back to where finance needs to have it to cover costs in the district sometimes just does not happen. People aren't sure of that process, things get in the way, and we just don't get the money back to the point where we need to have it to cut it for things like electricity and things of that nature. So over the course of the several years, we've thought about that and been constantly looking for a solution, and just nothing has come to the fore, and is being kind of a way that we could implement without any cost to the district. Don had attended a seminar this year and
October.
Yeah, and ran into a company called Facilitron, and brought that actually to us to take a look at, and we've had some other people take a look at this, some of the schools that do a lot of rentals, like Sarasota High, Venice High School, Tatum Ridge, sat with their staff, had them take a look at this product, and I think everybody kind of likes the solution that we're going to present to you today. So what I'd like to do is have Don introduce the, the people from Facilitron, and have them take you through a little bit, quick review of what the product looks like, and we can talk about it a little bit more.
Yeah, but Trent Allen and Christina Kirkland over here, they
Sorry. We have Trent Allen and Christina Kirkland over here, they're with Facilitron. I met them at the FASBO conference back in October, and their presentation, what they offer, just kind of blew me away, so I thought I'd bring it to the district. Trent?
Go ahead.
Push the button so the little light is on.
Hey, Dave's on.
Light is on.
Can you hear us? Can we turn it up?
Okay.
We'll talk loud.
Hello, yes, it's on.
My name's Trent Allen, this is Christina Kirkland. We're with Facilitron, we're a California company. We're a facility management platform, and thank you for having us. We are going to talk at a high level about the product and just introduce it to you, show you a couple of slides. We're going to start off with a 90-second video that might, you know, present, introduce the product quicker than we can do it by talking. So let's feel direct your attention to the screens.
With Facilitron, district and school administrators can track and manage facility schedules and requests like never before. Whether school activities or community events, our cloud-based platform gives you a digital catalog and calendar of all school facilities, so you can know who, what, when, and where activities are taking place in the district. But a Facilitron partnership is more than just a platform. The data our system collects allows us to deliver critical insights on how school facilities are utilized, to help schools monitor and measure the effectiveness of their facility use policies. Our easy-to-use platform not only streamlines the scheduling workflow, Facilitron provides customer support and account management teams to help you with the everyday management of your account, to collect payments, verify insurance, and answer questions from the community or from school administrators, saving you time. And with our unique business model, districts get software, setup, and support, all at no direct cost to the district. Come on over to Facilitron.com today, or email us at getstarted@facilitron.com, and join the thousands of schools who've transformed the way they schedule, manage, and rent their facilities.
Okay. Now I'll just show you a couple of slides.
Yeah, do I make it bigger?
So, yes, we are a facility management platform, software platform, that gives the district the ability to create and manage all the schedules of the, all the buildings and facilities across the district in one place. It consists of two portions, one, a community request portal, this is a place where the community comes to search and book or request school facilities, and a backend portal, the control center for the district officials to manage those requests and to see all the documents, insurance documents, and that sort of thing that come with it. So on the front end, this search portal accommodates the community requests, it streamlines the application process. It basically takes the process that you have now and digitizes it, puts it in the cloud so that everyone can access it. We have photos and pricing and live availability, so you can request a time that's available instead of having to go through the process of trying to find out what might be available, when it's available, before you make your request. And all of those things sort of improve the renter experience, and it streamlines for the, the, the schools, it streamlines that request process. They're not having to spend as much time communicating with the people through email, phone calls, or walk-ins, what's available, how much it costs, what it looks like. There are photos and pricing available for them right there. By that process, it ensures the equity in pricing and consistency of the, of the application of district policies. So one of the things that we see often is, district does have rates, rate schedules, but they're often not followed, as Jody was talking about. So in this way, we're at least presenting to the requister the cost estimate, including custodial and utilities or all the other fees that, that may come with renting on particular days, that all that can be configured into the system, so that at least we're starting at district policy with the pricing. It can still be controlled by the, by the admins, they can change the price, they can, they can do whatever they need to do, they can raise the price, they can do whatever. Also, Facilitron is a little bit more than just software, we're also a service. We provide customer support and account management teams. So the customer support teams are taking off some of the burden of answering some of those questions. They can, how do I, you know, my, my group's nonprofit, how do I get nonprofit rates? All those kinds of questions can be, can be answered by our people instead of having to be answered by the school admins. On the, on the control side, the district control admin side, it's one place for all the activities in the district on a calendar, where all those schedules can be managed and the requests can be managed. It's the who, what, when, and where of everything that's going on in the district. It provides visibility at the district level into all those activities, how much is being charged, who approved this, who changed this fee, that sort of thing. It's also a tracking system for internal use. So it's also a request system for school faculty to make requests on other school buildings. Like, many, many of the facilities on the platform, like this conference room, might not be available to the public to, to rent, but it, it could be available to school faculty or school officials to book. And so those, those facilities are on the platform as well and can be requested, going through an approval process, whatever the process is for each one, each facility, it can all be managed right there. It's also a consolidation of all the documents, insurance documents, nonprofit numbers, nonprofit letters, all in one place. Also, the payment history, the communications, all that stuff is in one place. And on the service side, we have account managers that are working with the district to help them take a look at where they are with their board policy and how well they're doing, where are efficiencies, what's going on here, is there something unusual going on that we can make some improvements with? So in that respect, we consider this a utilization tracking system. It measures not only the external community users, it, it measures how the school is using their own buildings, basketball team with basketball practice. All of that is part of the information that, of how, how many hours, for example, the buildings are being used. And so when we start to pair that with the cost data, so you have, you have, on the utilization side, you have the school use, and then you have the non-school use, which could be PTA, people that aren't paying, but they are allowed access to the, to the schools, all the way up to the commercial users who are paying and require insurance and that sort of thing. Then when you pair that with some cost data, your maintenance, your utilities, and that's another part of the service that we provide, is that we will help the district analyze their, their costs and utilization, to try to come up with, with a true measure of how much it's costing the district to use each facility per hour, so that they can compare that with their recovery costs and, and get a real accurate picture of, is the district subsidizing community groups or are they truly recovering their costs? So just the last sort of thing I want to leave you with is that we're, we were talking about this earlier, we're sort of like, like your navigation app that you're used to using on your phone. That's what we're trying to be for the district, giving you a, a way to track and measure how you're using your, your building, so that you can establish a baseline to, of use and your costs and your utilization, so that you can find places for improvement. We have districts that are, that know that they're not, they're not collecting what the board policy rates are. And sometimes those districts are at 10%. But good or bad, the important part is that we start tracking where the district is and giving that information to the, to the districts, and actually on our side, working with the districts to help them understand, where can we improve? How can we get to 12%? How can we get to 15%? How can we get up to 100% of board policy? So that is what we do, is we track and show you the route, we can get you around the traffic jams and try to get you there on time. That's what our software is about.
So thank you very much, Trent, we appreciate it. So Mr. Robinson was whispering in our ear, "How much does it cost?" And so one of the things that we liked about Facilitron is not only presentation where, you know, our renters are going to have a nice presentation, be able to look at our facilities, be able to rent online, that's a whole nice piece and improvement for the renters. But the cost, what we really like with Facilitron is their business model. And so how do they, how do they make money on this? Basically, there's no cost to the district, they charge a sliding scale which gets passed off to the renter.
Robinson, hear you. Well, then, 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 the absolute cost, we don't get the revenue, thank you.
So, so what, so what we propose is, let's talk about that, but, so it's a sliding scale based on how much the rental is. So for example, from zero to 500 bucks, I think it's 12%. So, you know, on a rental of $100, they're going to pay between $10 and $12 as a rental, additional to their, to their organization to provide this service. And so the district does not pay for any of that, we don't lose any revenue, we adjust the rates to include that bit of overhead for them to, to include this process. And I would say that, you know, we've looked at this for a number of years, we could not do it at this level for that amount of money. So for us, it doesn't increase our rates at all, or loss of revenue to the district, we simply would add that piece on to the rental process and make sure all our renters know that that's being added on. And what we would propose to do is if you, on your agenda for this afternoon, there is the agreement with Facilitron to enter into a contract for your approval. If you, if you approve that, one of the things we would want to do is work with Facilitron over the next month or so to analyze our rates, because we have not done that in a few years, and make sure we truly understand what's the cost of the rental of the VPAC or, or the VPA auditorium at Booker High School, whatever that is. Bring that back to you, and as a board, you can make a decision, what do we want to do with our charges? And then, once we get that decided, come back and lay those into the, into the program and start running through this process. I think a couple of things it does, it takes all of the responsibility off the school site. So if you talk to somebody like Lynn, who's the administrative secretary to David Jones over at Sarasota High, a great deal of her time is spent doing nothing but building rental. And we had her look at this, because she's been a kind of our guru in the district. But it would take all of the paperwork, the verification of insurances, the verification of nonprofit status, all falls back to Facilitron. They don't have to do any of that, so when it gets presented as a renter to the school facility, that's all been verified and completed. And all the principal has to do, or whoever the designee has to do, is approve the rental. It, it takes all of the responsibility off the school site, but still gives them the entire power, I guess I would say, to, to say, "Yes, I want to rent," or "No, I don't want to rent." In some cases, we don't want to rent, because, you know, for example, football fields, you know, they get wear and tear on them, and at some point, we want to block that rental process because we want to have them recover for the next football season. So that's certainly something within our, our purview, we could say, "Listen, we don't want to rent this for this particular time, and it's not provided to the public for rental." So we have all the power and none of the responsibility for all of the maintenance of all the records that go along with all of that rental process. And at the end of the day, we can, as a, as a, as a district, better support schools in that rental process, because everything becomes automated. So when a rental comes in place and it's approved by the principal, there are emails that go out of the system to all of the entities that need to support that rental, whether it be custodial, food service. So we can coordinate on a proactive basis now versus what happens sometimes, people forget to tell us about a rental, all of a sudden, we got a renter there, we're not supporting them, and so that's not a way we want to present to the community. So for all those reasons, I think, and certainly the business model, it makes sense to partner with a, with a company like Facilitron that take us to the next, kind of next level on our building rental process. So questions, comments?
Shirley.
Before, before that happens, I just want to add on to Jody's comments. When we did our original budget projections, we had a 3% proposed rate increase. What we did in subsequent budget run is we did not apply that 3%. So I have talked to staff about how do we accommodate for that 3%. This is one of those strategies, and I just wanted to point that out, is that recouping utilities cost is one of the major obstacles that we have, is when we rent a facility, we want to recoup the utilities. If that's not being remitted to the district, and that's coming out of general fund at the district level. So this is one of our strategies when we contemplated budget, the 1.2 million in reductions that were approved and applied to our budget for next year, one of them was not taking the 3% proposed rate increase from TECO, which means essentially we have to reduce our either collections or our consumptions by 3%.
Shirley. I think the, the way that the fees are doing, I mean, because that's just like Ticketron. I mean, you pay something to Ticketron for getting your tickets through Ticketron.
Exactly.
So I would assume, yeah, it's 12% up to 500, and then what is it over?
Every 500, it goes down a percentage point down to
It goes down then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six percent.
And, and that too is, where does the money go? Because if, if, who, who, I mean, I would imagine Because if, who, I mean, I would imagine, the school has to pay for the janitorial service, correct?
No, it comes from facility service, it's centrally budgeted.
So, that's centrally budgeted?
Correct.
So, maintenance and, so would the district then get the rental?
Yeah, so what we plan to happen is we're going to change the workflow process a little bit. So, right now, if I rented Sarasota High, I'm going to cut, whatever the rental cost is, I'm going to cut that check to Sarasota High, it goes into Sarasota High account, and they're responsible for distributing that. There's a lot of entities that go into that rental, and that's very difficult, even in the best of intentions, to try to figure out where all that money goes. We're going to switch that process around, the renter is actually going to pay Facilitron. Facilitron's going to keep track of all of those costs, and they will remit a check to Finance. Finance will then distribute, if any money goes back to the school, Finance will make that distribution back to the school. But, it goes to Finance because most of the things that are encompassed in terms of costs in a rental are centrally budgeted, like utilities or custodial overtime, things like that, Finance will then put that into the correct accounts to cover those costs appropriately.
And I would think, what happens if, you know, a school forgot to put something on their schedule that the school had been planning, and then there's this conflict? I mean, I would think, all right, so the school knows when they're going to have football and basketball games, but what if they move up and there's, it's not the runoff, but it's the playoffs?
Sure.
Playoffs.
Yep.
We have that happen a lot, actually. And so, basically, our account manager will work with your district, and so, if you guys make the playoffs and we need to move some reservations around, we can, one, repurpose that reservation somewhere else, so school still gets first priority to reserve those facilities. Two, is we can actually refund the renter if it doesn't work, they want this one facility, or we can reschedule it for a different time and date. And so, school still has first priority to reserve those reservations, but then it's off of your plate to have to worry about, well, where can we reschedule it? That's what our account management team comes in to help you guys do.
And we've even had it en masse, like in, one of our districts is Napa Valley, where they had the recent wildfires. And so, suddenly, their gyms are being used as shelters, and everything had to be canceled. Instead of the district or the school officials having to cancel that, they were able to say, hey, we need to cancel all the reservations on the system. So, we handled all of that, and we repurposed ones that could be repurposed.
What other districts in Florida do you have?
We are working with Lee County right now.
And VPAC could be particularly tricky.
Sure, so we're going to have, absolutely, so we're going to have certainly those facilities where we've got different agreements in place, and we're going to have to work with Facilitron when we bring those on. If we do decide we want to open them up for additional rental, we'll have to make sure we've got the parameters in place so we know what those operating agreements are. And so, I think that's one of the things that we liked about Facilitron, is they are very flexible, all that power stays with the district, they're not going to say, hey, you got to rent this because we want to rent it. That power lies with us. So, I think that going in, particularly with those types of instances, we need to pay attention to and make sure we get that mix correct.
Eric.
When we raised the VPAC by 12%, there's going to be a line of people coming to my office yelling at me, I'm just, I mean, raising it up by 12%, not just VPAC, but other churches and...
Well, I think what's important, and I'm going to cut you off, Mr. Robinson, but I think what's important is the fees.
You can call me Eric, Jody.
Okay, Eric, I think one of the important things going into this is the fee study, and they're going to help us with that. And I think what you're going to see on the fee study is, even when we add the cost of doing business with Facilitron, we're still the best rental anywhere around.
I'm just telling you that...
And so, I think we want to provide you with that data that says, hey, these are some local other rates, these are what other school districts are charging, and, you know, you need to be comfortable with what we're going to charge, and you determine that. But, I mean, we want to give you that background data, so if somebody says, hey, I got to pay more, we have the justification saying, this is why we're paying more.
Joe, do you think that people are going to come in, sit down, and be reasonable and calm and collective?
Well, I know you always are, Eric, so...
The other thing is, so, I know that this doesn't concern you, but in essence, there will be schools who rightly or wrongly did not, you know, remit all the money, so in essence, they'll be losing some funding that they've counted wrong.
That is absolutely correct.
That they never should have received.
Well, that they never should have received, but for whatever reason...
Their ill-begotten gains will be remitted to the district.
But, we're still talking about money that is being used at the schools.
Just blame the superintendent for it, that seems to work.
Well, but when we do the fee study, one of the things that we need to look at is there really is no incentive at the individual school level for a nonprofit rental. We have a two-tier rental system, we calculated our rental rates to nonprofit entities to be at our cost. Essentially, that means that the school sites do all the work and they keep none of the money. It gets remitted back and should be remitted back. It's only when they rent to for-profit entities, and I would gauge that's a very, very small percentage of our rentals, that may be something as a board that you want to look at, is when properly administered, none of that money stays at the school site.
Rightly or wrongly, I'm just concerned about schools losing funding that they need to support programs at the school level. Rightly or wrongly, or why they have that money, but I trust that the schools are using that money for good intentions, that's all I'm saying. Maybe they got it by, oh, gotten gain by nefarious means, but I believe that our schools do use that money for good purposes. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Time to wrap it up.
Well, listen, thank you very much, and like I said, it'll be on your agenda for consideration this afternoon, but we really appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the operations tools, and Scott Limpy, you can just sit right there, we've taken up some of your time, so you're down to, what, 45 minutes?
So, we'll go as fast as we can. So, let me just kind of do a really brief introduction. What we want to do today is introduce you to three different tools that we're using in the operations team. We're not going to ask you to vote on anything, we're not going to ask you to support anything, we didn't give you any read ahead, we just simply want to make you aware. So, there are three tools that we're using today, kind of in their infancy, they're quantitative tools to help us inform decisions. There's a part of me that always refers to this as our keeping up with the Cantalupos presentation. And the reason I do that is because I watch the way the board responds when Denise does presentations. Number one, she's just incredibly smart at everything she does, but more importantly, she uses quantitative data to inform her decisions, and I watch the way the board responds to that, and it's always very positive. And so, what we want to do today is demonstrate three particular tools that we're using on the business side of the district to do exactly that. So, we're going to talk real briefly about our concurrency management system, we're going to talk briefly about a GIS mapping tool that kind of brings that concurrency stuff to life, and then we're going to talk about a key performance indicator measure with some benchmarks. So, that's kind of what we're trying to do today, just expose you to those. So, number one, you know we're using them, and number two, if you get familiar with what's in them, if you ever need that kind of information, you know you can come to us and lean on the data source. So, that's what we're going to try to do today, and I'm going to ask Kathy to introduce the first two. Scott, you do the job. How many times do you ask me, how do I know if Scott's doing a good job?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having the planning department here to talk about some new tools that we have been working very hard to develop. When I first started almost four years ago today, I'm in, this is my four-year week, Mickey and I were looking at the way we do concurrency management and GIS and knew that we could do better, being from other planning organizations that I've worked in. These are two really fundamental, important tools that we use to help drive our decisions. The first of which that we're going to talk about is the concurrency management system. This is a system, our previous system that we have been using has been an Excel database that we, it's basically just a spreadsheet. We would add, as developments would come in our door, we would add it to the concurrency list, and we wouldn't have any good way of really tracking, first of all, what the differences were between a preliminary, which is either a zoning or comp plan application, or a final, which is a plat or a subdivision. We didn't have a real good way of dividing the two of them, we also didn't have a real good way of using that data to help us understand where was development happening, how quickly was it happening, in what phasing it was happening. So, Mickey and I took on an effort of going across the state, working with other planners to find what other people were using, and we found a really great tool in Orange County. We worked with the planners in Orange County who had developed this tool for themselves. We asked them, would you be willing to work on a similar project for us? And they agreed, so in their spare time, which probably isn't a lot, they have been working over the last year and a half to develop a similar system for us, which now gives us really great data. I actually, we've, it's been beta testing, we've been beta testing it through the last six months, and I was able to use the beta version of it when we went to meet with our schools to look at their future capacity growth for next year, when we were doing their assessments of what the projections would be. And I was able to bring up and show a principal, these are developments that we have coming in the door in your area, and the principals just really loved having that immediate access to data in a way that we could search, we could aggregate, we could query, things that we were never able to do on our old, simple spreadsheet that we were using. So, Mickey is going to talk about and show you these tools, and I think you're going to be as impressed as our principals have been.
Okay, and I can tell you, being in my 13th year here, that I've wanted something like this all along, because it's been very labor-intensive for me to keep track of all this, so this is really a cool system. I'm just going to go briefly through the different tabs. We have a tab that shows each school, the FISH permanent capacity, the enrollment, which is based on the 40-day counts, what it's operating at in a level of service, because we have an adopted level of service standard for concurrency that each of our schools has to work at, has to be at. So, we have an inventory of that. We have an informal inventory which amounts to any land use change application, be it a rezone, a comprehensive plan amendment, which is kind of 30,000 foot, I'm going to change my land use to get more density is usually what they're looking for. We keep track of that, and as you'll see on the maps that Diane has done, we can, she's identified those, so we can see the future, what we may have coming down the pike. We have an informal report that goes out to the planner at the local planning agencies that is in as part of their staff report, that goes to the prospective boards and jurisdictions for a vote to either approve or deny the project. We have a report that goes in there. We have, and it's a capacity report that looks at each school, kind of a snapshot of where it's at, what the permanent program capacity is, the current enrollment based on the 40-day counts, because those are the numbers that we use all year long, and it shows what it's operating at as far as a level of service standard, and what our five-year enrollment projected, projection and capacity is. Then, we get into formal, and this one's really kind of neat because you can actually take this, this is formal, plats and final site plans, which means, once they're approved, they can go out and start building, homes can be occupied, students can be coming. We have the ability in this system to search a specific zone. I'm going to go down to Taylor Ranch. And this shows you all the projects that have come in for final site plans or final plats in the Taylor Ranch, and here, Venice Middle and Venice High School zone. It tells you the number of students that are generated by the project type, be it single family or multi-family, and the total students that we expect K through 12 from that project. So, it's kind of exciting, so you can go and look at a specific school, and then this data has been converted to the GIS maps that Diane has worked on, so you can visually see what's happening in a geographic area of the county. So, it's really kind of exciting. And then, we have a letter...
Excuse me, Mickey, now, does that show what's coming up the next year per student, or is that total for the project?
Is total for the project.
Thank you.
And plats typically are done, take a project like Villages of Lakewood Ranch, they have approval for 5,144 units. They're going to plat those in smaller increments. We know the overall project, what they're going to do, they have a phasing plan, we look at each plat as it comes in. So, we're addressing, that's when we're going to have the kids, is shortly after that plat is approved and those homes are being built. So, we look at that by plat, little pieces, so we have a better idea of what we can expect. And then, we have a letter of receipt that is required by all the applicants to take and submit to each jurisdiction with their application packet to the local government. Then, the local government knows that we, as a district, have seen that there's a project coming in, and we're part of the review process. And all the local governments set that up that way because they didn't want to be chasing all the applications all over the place and having to contact us all the time, oh, have you seen this one? So, they set it up years ago that that's how it is, that letter of receipt comes from us, we see it first even before they do. And then, there is a portion here that shows the physical impact of a project, if they have to mitigate, if we have a deficiency and they have to mitigate any seats, we have the ability to show what their impact fees would be for that project, and what their proportionate share mitigation would be, should we ever choose to use that. So, we have the ability to see what we could get from a large project, should the need be there, if we're really deficient in a geographic area. And then, we have a tally at the end by school that shows how many total reservations are in, how many student stations are reserved for this. So, it's really kind of an exciting tool. I know I've kind of gone through it kind of quick, but we're still kind of working in the beta form here to clean up some things and change some things and put current data in, and we're hoping with our 40-day, I'm sure with our 40-day count this coming October, that we'll have everything here up to date, and you'll really be excited about what we can show you later. So, I'm going to let Diane now show you the visual portion of this.
So, expanding on what Mickey has told you about our new concurrency management system, this is taking that same data and showing it location-based in a map. So, what we have here, I created a series of map journals, each for elementary, middle, and high school, and it shows school boundary and the developments that are coming in within that boundary. Here, we see Ashton Elementary. These are, this is current development, which is our final plats and final site plans that are coming in, and then, using our student generation rate, the total students that would be coming out of those developments, out of all of them. Here, we have Laurel McComas, oop, one more down. And it shows you all the final site plans and final plats that have come in within the Laurel McComas attendance area, and then, how many students would be generated from those developments. So, we can actually see where those developments are coming in on a map. And these are elementary students, because this is the elementary map journal. We can also see the impact on Laurel McComas's middle school students.
What does the SF stand for when it says 144 SF homes?
Single family.
Pardon me?
Single.
Single family, thank you.
There's a different generation rate for a single family and one for multi-family.
Diane, will you have that up? Talk about the, talk about sort of the relationship between the students generated at the top and the capacity at the bottom, those bold, I just want to make sure that it's clear to the board what those represent. So, at the very top, it says, total students generated, so that means out of that collection of development, 149 students.
Students could be generated from those developments.
Right, and then...
Using our student generation rate, and then, our current available capacity at that school is 194, so... So, it shows that there is available capacity to compensate for that development. Yes, and this is just at the elementary level. For Laurel McComas, we split it using a middle school, elementary percentage, and so, for middle school students, there are 75 students that would be generated, where the current capacity for, available capacity for middle school is 129. So, there is capacity available. Diane, show the final, the one with Venice.
She's going to, hold on.
The final...
We're going to do the dot.
Oh, okay, well...
We'll show Venice first.
Okay. This is development within Venice High School's attendance zone, current development could generate up to 276 students, with a current available capacity of minus 72, negative 72. So, we are over capacity at... So we are over capacity at Venice High. Something more recently that we've been able to do is take data out of SIS and geocode our students into points on a map, which you'll see here, this is Venice High School's attendance zone outlined in red. The black dots are the students that attend Venice High according to their address. So these are, you see there are students living in Northport, there's a few dots out in Port Charlotte and Punta Gorda.
In the pocket.
And then this area outlined, or shaded in blue, is Lemon Bay's, Lemon Bay High's attendance area within Sarasota County's, the county boundary. So these are students that are attending Venice High that are districted for Lemon Bay, but they're in Sarasota County.
So we have the ability with this to show where every student that attends our schools actually physically lives, even outside the county with GIS, which is really kind of exciting. I know you'd be excited about that.
Especially if you could begin to peel the data back, because for the, a couple of things, for the first time you have visibility into development and at the school level, how that development is impacting the capacity of that school. We've always been able to talk about that, but now you can not only look at the data, but then you can see it on a map visually as to what it looks like. You've never had that before. And you can use it to inform decisions about your capital budget. When you hear them say 276 kids coming to Venice High School, a school that's already over capacity, you ought to be asking the question, so where is the classroom wing at Venice High School in my five-year plan? So it really does help you use the data in a way to inform your decision, so.
And I think data like this will help future forecasts too, because-
Absolutely.
Just recently talking to Rex Jensen at Schroder Manatee about maybe having a planning session with him and his staff, I think this would make really good sense as well to have these tools at our fingertips.
If you wanted, if you wanted to schedule some more time to talk about this, we could do that. Really, the purpose today was just to let you know that it's out there, expose you to what it can do, so if you wanted to have future discussions-
I do want to just quickly mention-
Yeah, we should do some-
The membership and mobility reports that you receive every fall will now be way more accurate, because I had so many students that did not match the map, so Diane and I have been working together. I said, we've got to get these numbers better so we can plan better and this will help us do that. So that's exciting.
Pretty accurate now.
And Mickey, you're in drop now, correct?
Yes.
So don't leave us.
I want to make one quick comment about the GIS. When, when I started four years ago, Mickey had a working knowledge of GIS and used it for a lot of, used it to help us a lot. But when, we had an opportunity about two years ago, when somebody went into facilities that had been in our team to upgrade and really look at our GIS capacity. And Mickey led this charge to really increase our ability. We hired Diane, who had come from a environmental planning background, but had been, was a registrar in our school district. We helped her get the training using our funds from, that we collect from the evaluation of the projects that Mickey was showing. We got Diane this training and we now call her our map geek, because she, she, when she's working on maps, she closes the door and we know, leave her alone. But the tool that we have been able to generate because of the training that we've given to Diane and being able to change that position to Diane's is going to be not, I mean, she just gave you a taste of this. It's going to be really cool in the future when we're bringing you capital improvement plans and we're having the discussion about where our budgets should be and where our projections should be. We're now going to be able to do all of that using Mickey's data that she's got with the concurrency management system and the mapping data that Diane can, and the partnership is just really cool. And I can't be more excited that we are here.
And as a district, this can be used with other departments too in data. It's really exciting what could be done with this in the future.
So one more tool we want to introduce, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask, what are you projecting the enrollment to be next year?
Increased less than 500. That's an inside joke. I lost the steak dinner to Eric over a projection. So one more tool, and I'm going to ask Reina Bonner to join me. I think all of you know Reina. Reina's, she's my administrative assistant by title, but she's a whole lot more than that practically. Reina has been our project manager district-wide for our relationship with a company called Act Point, KPI. And while Reina's bringing it up, just a couple of words of history. So Act Point is a, kind of the brainchild of the Council for Great City Schools. If you're familiar with that organization, they're represented by essentially the largest 60 districts in America. They're a wonderful decision-making body. It's great to be able to plug into them. Several years ago, as the council was struggling with, how do you measure the effectiveness of business operations? They saw this hole in our ability to do that. And so they went looking for, how do we, how do we find a better way to do that? Act Point kind of came to their rescue and said, we can develop a system by which we will help all of the districts who are members, collect information and then be able to compare that information across districts into some median measures. So for the first time, we had the ability to measure business operations in a quantitative way and then compare it to a benchmark that was driven by the member districts of the council. So I've been working with the, with the leadership of the council for a number of years now. We just recently entered into a formal relationship with Act Point. And so I just want to introduce you today to what that tool allows us to do. So I'm going to ask Reina to bring this up. So the process, if we can bring the screens up, there you go. So when you log into, and she's logged in as me, I did this this morning, but, so when you log in, this is essentially the screen you see at the beginning. It's kind of a welcome to me. The process though starts with a survey, and that is Act Point coming to member districts and saying, we're going to ask you some questions about information. It may have timed out while it was waiting, there you go. So I'm going to ask Reina to open a survey and we're going to, we're going to use food service as our demo to begin with. So we're going to go, see there's a number of years, we're going to go to 2015, we're going to go inside operations, you see there's a number of departments there, we're going to open food service, and then we're going to go to Beverly's survey. So go ahead and open the survey. So this is what comes to Beverly at the beginning of each cycle. So you notice on the top there, there's little toggles that say 1 through 6. That's because this is a six-page survey. That gives you a feel for the amount of information they collect. On this first page, they're collecting information about the number of schools that Beverly serves and the number of meals she serves to those kids. If you go to page three, page three is going to ask her some questions. By the way, this is a web-based application, so it works really, really nice at 6:30 in the morning, but all of our kids are now testing online. So here you see some questions about the number of meals that Beverly's serving. If you go to page four, you're going to see some information about the revenue she collects and where she collects it for. And then if you go to page five, you see some expense information. And I don't want to spend a ton of time on the details of this, but just give you a feel for, for how intricate the data collection process is. And so now you have six pages worth of data that we've collected from this department that we can build some key performance indicators around. Go to, before we leave surveys, go to human resources, yeah, you're a step ahead of me. I want to go to human resources to show you one kind of neat feature. Once you open their survey, go to page two of the survey. So one of the things the survey does is keep you honest on data. If you report an element that doesn't seem to make sense, it will tell you that. So see that kind of blue box at the top? It says your data, your data is marked as potentially invalid. So if you go down, I think it's question 29 here that they're telling us is invalid. So it will flag it. See, there's a little gold box there, it says this number is too low. So the measure is aggregate number of student attendance days that classroom teachers were absent. And the number that we've reported in there is 1,900. I mean, that number doesn't even pass the giggle test. Clearly, if you add up all of our teacher absences across the year, it's going to be something bigger than 1,900. So what the system is doing is flagging us, what the system's doing here is flagging us saying, we don't think this number is accurate, go look. It kind of keeps you honest in the data collection phase. So let's go look at, let's go into KPIs. And again, let's start with food service. While Reina's bringing up the KPIs, I want to talk just a second about kind of where we are with data. We are in our second year of collecting information, go to 2015, Reina, I'll give you. We're in the second year of collecting information. There are parts of this that I have a lot of confidence in, there are parts that I struggle a little bit. And let me give you just one example in food service. So one of the things we want to show you here is meals per labor hour. So as Beverly and I were going over her collection, we looked at her meals per labor hour and she and I have been tracking this since I met Beverly and that number is always in the 18-point-something range. When we saw the way that Act Point reported it first, it was in the mid-16s. And so we went back to them, trying to figure out why the data was bad, and we noticed one of the things was missing was a way to report à la carte meal equivalents, of which Beverly serves a ton. So Reina went back to Act Point, coordinated with them on how do we do this? They effectively asked us to convert those to lunch equivalents and report them as lunches. We made that adjustment with à la carte and all of a sudden you can see that our, that our meals per labor hour number is about 18.8. So just an example of where we need to be paying attention to the quality of the data before we use it to make decisions. This is, this is a KPI, this is the way they're reported. At the very top of the page, you're going to see that there are four measures. Those are the minimum reported, the maximum reported, our district, and then the average. So in this particular case, you see the green bar is the average across the member districts of the Council for Great City Schools. The gold bar is us. And so in this case, given that this is a measure of productivity, it would say the Beverly's team is marginally more productive than the average food service team of the member districts. That's good news, by the way. If you scroll down a little bit, underneath it, there are two or three things there. First is a description that tells you how the particular KPI is calculated. And then there's just some factors that could influence how that number is reported and then finally why it ought to be imported to us, important to us as decision-makers. So that's just-
How does our cost per hour compare?
So we can, we can go back, well, a couple of things. We can go back and look at a couple, or we can schedule some time to really peel back into the KPIs. My goal today-
I mean, if your meal per hour is higher, but the cost per hour is also-
Yeah, so, so let's, while you ask a question, let's look at food costs per, so there's two big expenses in food service, food and people. So let's look at food costs per revenue. So what you're going to see here, and again, this is a KPI that I have some confidence in, there's a whole lot of data reported here, so it takes a second to open.
But as we, as we evaluate these data elements, when you look at, example, production per labor hour, that's universal. You can compare yourself to districts in New York, in California. When you get into some of the costs, it does not contain economic adjustments. So as you look at these tools, you have to always go in with the lens of knowing that your comparison districts may lie in dramatically different economies.
So let's talk about that, and this is a great, great point. What you see here is food costs per revenue. And so you can see that our food costs as a percentage of revenue are a little bit higher than the average. And if Beverly was, were sitting here, she would say, of course it is. It's because I do scratch cooking, it's because I have farm-to-school, it's because I reuse fresh food and vegetables. And so we know, and it's a matter of choice, that our food costs are marginally higher than other districts. So this isn't necessarily bad news, as long as you can say, why is it we're marginally higher? And I think frankly, this is something we're proud of, that we're spending a bit more money on food. But Todd's point is right. So one of the things we can do is filter. So there's a little tool on the side that says filter. So I'm going to ask Reina to filter this by, let's filter it by state. So we can say, just compare us to other districts that report in the state of Florida. You'll see that the number goes down dramatically and you'll see that we, now the gap has narrowed a whole lot because we're comparing ourselves to districts that buy food in the state of Florida. So having those filters is kind of neat. Go back to filters, turn that one off, and then do it by enrollment. So one of the other things we talk about is, are there some economies of scale that Miami Dade might be able to run a cheaper operation because they're so big? And so what Reina's done here is filter it to districts that are between 25,000 and 75,000 enrollment. So we can actually, there are some filters we can use to try to compare more apples to apples. So great question at the right time. So I want to show you, let's go to M and O. And again, I just want to show you a couple more KPIs and I'll stop talking here, because I know we're over time a little bit. I do want to look at custodial workload. We've talked a lot about, a lot about where our custodians are in terms of the square foot per custodian. There's a filter on in there somewhere, isn't there? Yeah, let's clear all the filters. So if you compare us, if you compare us to, it looks like it's still there, doesn't it? Just click clear, there you go. But one of the things you see in this data, whether it's filtered or not, is that our custodians are, in terms of square foot per custodian, are doing a heavier lift than their peers across the, across the nation. The last thing I wanted to look at just a little bit in M and O is utilities. So we've always said, particularly during the budget tough times, we've always said that our utilities program is one of our highlights, one of the things we do real well. So this is utility costs per square foot. So again, the green bar is the average of the districts that are members. The gold bar to the left is your utility cost per square foot two years ago, and the red bar is last year. So Jody's begun to collect second year. But you look at that and you say, wow, whatever we're doing with our energy program is working, because we're paying a heck of a lot less for energy per square foot than, than member districts are. So it really does sort of say that the decisions we made-
But Jody made the price went up from year to year, is that what you're saying?
Marginally, but still, but still well below that.
I'll talk to Jody.
Some of that's because we're not collecting all that revenue from rentals at the schools. So, and I want, let's go to HR, because I want to do two things. One, I want to demonstrate for, I want to show you where you are with first-year teacher retention compared to some of your member districts.
Oh, yeah, I want to see that.
So this is good news, I mean, we're always looking for teachers, but you can see, and what this measures is essentially a teacher that we hired two years ago, how many of them came back last year? So here you can see that what the average retention is, that's the green bar, we are the gold. So you can see, not only is our teacher retention high, but it's, but it's fairly significantly higher than the, than the average of the member districts in the council. While we're in HR, go back-
Can we look at that for Florida?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and filter that for state? Thanks, Reina. Yes, ma'am, in the first year, correct.
First year or second year?
First year. That's teachers who come back for their second year, so it's one year, so there's the Florida districts that report.
And we're the gold?
We're the gold. Yep, and the average is green. So even within the state of Florida, we're pretty competitive with teacher retention.
Do we see those other ones that are beating us?
You can't, so-
Or is that something?
Like when we see that there are, well, there's not a lot, but there's a little bit that are beating us. Can we look into what districts those are and maybe, I mean, that would be something HR would do?
So you, so you're a bit ahead of me, but let's do it while you ask the question. So there's a feature in the tool called community. So you notice at the bottom of each one of those bars, there's a number. That number corresponds to a particular district. The anonymity of the district is protected, but we can communicate with them. So if you double-click on, a couple of ways you can do this. See, Reina, just double-click on the bar of one of the districts that's high. And notice at the bottom it says, ask the district a question. So we could click on that, it would open an email that we could send to that district and say, hey, I'm Scott from Sarasota, we're pretty impressed with your-
Are you Duval County?
Do you have my coletteche or do you?
Right. And is it free? But this is our ability to communicate. And in fact, Reina, while we're talking about it, why don't you go up to the community tool on the top? One of the things that we were going to demonstrate later, but we might as well do it now. So, so this is the community where you can ask, yeah, click on that one in the middle. So somebody asked the question, why are your bus drivers leaving and what are you doing to keep them? That's a, that's a problem that we struggle with here every day. But notice, so somebody sent the question out and then other districts come back and answer that question. So this is our ability to reach out to either an individual district or to all of the districts who are members and ask them questions like, why is your first-year retention high? What are you doing to keep bus drivers? So a real powerful way to reach out to your, not only your peer districts, but the ones that appear to be doing it well. Go, go back to KPIs and you guys, remember when Roy Sprinkle made his presentation to the board about the Booker High teacher hire? A couple of you asked the question of Roy, are you resourced appropriately? And I just wanted to show you one piece of information about that. So the other HR, so this is HR cost as a percent of, as a per FTE. So again, the green bar is the average, the gold bar is us. So you can see that we're spending less on human resources than any other district who's reporting information.
Does that mean, no, he's not staffed?
It does mean, no, he's not staffed appropriately. He gave you the politically correct answer, which I appreciated, but, so now, what this tool, but what this tool allows to do is model. So I'm going to ask Reina to click on the modeling tool. One of the pieces of information we collect in HR is the amount of money we spend on human resources. This is 15, 16 data you're looking at, so you see that the number is 1.2 million. So I'm going to ask Reina to just kind of- So I'm going to ask Raina to just kind of double that number. What happens to Roy as a relative district? And you can see, even if we doubled his budget, we've brought him up significantly, but he's still to the left of the average. So just nothing, again, nothing you need to do about that. This is just, I wanted to demonstrate the modeling tool. It allows us to play with, how are the KPIs affected if we make some different decisions? Which is just one of the kind of neat features of this. And I think that, I know we're short on time, so Jane, where are we?
Time to go.
Okay. Well, we've had a chance to demonstrate everything we wanted to-
That's good. I really like this. I'd like to see more of this kind of thing. Bless you. I think this is very, very good.
So right now, it's password-protected. In our districts, each of the directors who are over a director that reports data have access. Raina is the administrator, so Raina can do just about anything, and I have access. But simply, it's simply a matter of giving you access to a password to get access.
How many districts in Florida are using this, are reporting data?
I honestly, I don't know. I think there's like 12, and they're the big ones. They're Miami-Dade, Broward, Bivard, Orange, Hillsborough. They're the districts-
They're mostly in the organization.
They are mostly, we are not. So we are not a member of the council.
We are not in the, that's right. We're not large enough to be in the organization, so they're big.
But to their credit, they're very, very willing to work with us on, I mean, allowing us to be part of this data collection effort is one such example. So they're great to work with, too. There's just smart, capable people out there, so.
That was cool.
Well, it gives us the, I watch you respond to Denise when she shows you student achievement data that's measurable, and I know that's meaningful to you. This begins to give you that same flavor in business operations. I know.
Thank you. This is very, very informative.
If we want to talk more, we can schedule some time to put any one of these three tools on your agenda.
Great. Thank you.
We hope you use it if you come back wanting more money for somebody, prove you need it, right?
There you go. Kind of just did that for Roy.
So you can stay right where you are and have Michael Andreas join you? Michael? Hello?
You'll still stay.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Can you give us an update on anything, like personnel or anything?
Sure.
All right, so before we get started, just a caution, we're going to spend some time on the organizational structure. Tonight, there will be, or this afternoon, there will be an item on your agenda. Your acceptance of the organizational structure also is the official authorization to begin hiring. We have approved some job descriptions. We've advertised those positions. But we do not have authorization because the org chart hasn't been approved. And it does impact this year's budget, obviously, because we want those individuals to start before July 1st. The time that we have on the agenda for today is to look at a personnel structure. I know you have lots and lots of questions from a procedure standpoint in regards to our new safety, security initiatives. We did not allocate time in this meeting. We will talk in-depth in June. But I just wanted you to know, when you look and say, "10 minutes, how in the world am I going to get all of my questions answered in 10 minutes?" Today is about the physical organizational structure and the personnel. And then on tonight's agenda will be the acceptance of the staffing plan and authorization to proceed.
Got it. Okay, Michael, you want to get started?
Sure. All right, so once again, thank you very much for having me here. I'm happy and always willing to talk about all these things. So what you see in front of you is the organizational chart, the proposed chart, that has the two manager positions clearly depicted on there with their direct-line reports, and then obviously the chief of police. So as we organize ourselves to meet our modern and current needs for the school district, it starts off with having a manager for technology, security-related technologies, of which we have significant technologies in the district. And then the operations piece, a separate manager for that. And then obviously, a police chief leading the police department. So what we've done is listed each of those reports under each of those three manager positions pretty clearly. So if you have a question or two about that, I'm happy to address those.
I like, I just like it if you would have colored it by function. But besides that, for the org chart, I like it. But I like being able to look at org charts that are colored by-
We'll get you some colored pencils, Eric, and you can-
I just can't tell you how I feel about-
Color the, you know, color those. Caroline?
So we need a manager for this department, a technology manager for this department, as well as having Joe Binzwanger and his department?
Yeah, so the technologies, the safety and security and emergency management technologies that we have in the district are separate from Joe Binzwanger and informational technology. So the technologies I speak of are the camera systems, the alarm systems, the intrusion systems, all of those kinds of things. There's surveillance systems, the monitoring systems, the emergency response systems, the mass notification systems, the messaging systems. All of those kinds of things fall squarely under the safety, security department.
Joe holds the title of Director of IT, so he's in a director-level position. As a point of comparison, he's a C-level administrator, and you're looking at Fs and Gs here. So one of the things that are, the title manager is not always universal. So they have administrative capacity to oversee the work of the organizational. So you see, one's a G and one's an F. But to put them in as a comparison, Joe is a C.
But also, this is an entirely different level of technology.
Yes.
It's electrical, low-voltage technology. It's specific to the safety and security department, and it's something that Joe does not feel comfortable with.
I'm aware of that. My bottom-line question is this, is how can we afford it? Is there money in the budget for it? And that's why I'm asking. Is there any overlap? It's great to have a whole department, but is there overlap? Is there things that we can do without, or we absolutely need?
So two questions there. The budget implications have been contemplated in next year's budget. And so we brought to you a separate line item that talked about the capacity of our internal safety and security department. And that includes the manager positions that you see here. That was priced at about $225,000 to build the capacity. There are other positions that you've approved job descriptions on. In regards to overlap, there is a relationship between this technology and what happens in Joe's shop. It runs through various shared network components, but there are specialized skill sets. And so we have talked to Joe and, you know, thrown around ideas of, "Where does this reside?" Joe is in agreement that it is specialized, and it resides in safety, security. But certainly, there's a working relationship, and there is overlap. They share a network and various infrastructure components.
Would there be an overlap also with Tracy in communications?
There would not in this particular, no.
Not for that one job, but for this department?
Well, I would say that Tracy overlaps every department, yes. And so there's a very close working relationship. I think if you were to talk about where do Tracy's incoming calls from, come from, Michael and Steve Cantis are probably at the top of the list of people who called Tracy at all hours of every day.
I just want to make sure I understand the whole structure of the organization.
I'll give you a couple of examples of, I don't know if I'd call it overlap, but where we've looked at the organizational structure. And Mike's department is getting bigger, but it didn't cost you any money. Last year, we looked at locksmiths, and we said, "Our locksmiths are a key component of the safety and security system." And the answer to that is yes. Locksmiths used to report to Jody. Today, they report to Mike. All we did is move them. We did that same thing this year with intercom maintenance. So as we talked with Joe about what are the things that make sense from a pure IT perspective versus what are those things that really have a direct safety and security implication, the intercom system seemed to be an integral part of the safety and security system. And so the intercom folks now work for Mike. Again, those are not new positions. We've realigned them, in the first case from facilities, and in the latter case from IT.
Okay. That makes sense. And that's, I guess, the question I was asking, but wasn't clear enough.
Yeah, yeah.
And in the interest of full disclosure, you reach a tipping point, and part of that is the reclassification of the director-level position to executive director, is as those responsibilities have come, we so too believe that the leader of that department should be at the executive director level.
Shirley?
I know we have a new job description, but it was my understanding that the director was also going to get some law enforcement training or certification.
So the executive director position, the position that we would propose that Mike moves into, since we're eliminating the director, move into executive director. I would probably do that as a direct appointment once the org chart and job description is approved. Does not require that he is a certified law enforcement officer, but it is a commitment that Mike has made to obtain that certification. We believe for the flow of information to flow correctly, absolutely, the chief of police must be a sworn law enforcement officer. But we too believe that the executive director should hold that certification so that he can have intelligent conversations with local law enforcement partners. And sometimes, his lack of that certification limits their ability to share information with them. So that is a personal commitment that Mike has made.
Shirley?
You know, we've been getting all kinds of questions. They were, the communications, I mean, are we going to set up our own communication system? And then I think it was even the evidence room. Are we going to have our own evidence room and somebody to watch all the evidence? I mean-
So eventually, so let me put it to you this way. As we move forward with the development of this department, which in my opinion makes a whole lot of sense, there are some steps and some milestones that we will have to meet to make sure that we reach, eventually want to be accredited for this department. So there are ways that we can get between where we are now and the start of school. So we will have to sign some agreements with our partner law enforcement agencies in this area for various forms of support. And so I have met with Chief Tapino, Chief Matt Mueller, and other representatives in this area, and they have been offering their support throughout. And so there are agreements that we are going to enter with them. For example, our evidence, our property and evidence room. We don't have a property and evidence room in the school district as of yet. And so there is a way to get there, to meet that requirement by signing an agreement with other agencies. So we can use their physical property and evidence room and also their procedures, which have already been approved by FDLE. So we would just simply adopt them and use them until we have our own room.
Caroline?
One of the emails we're getting is the fact that we have to have an evidence room, and how much is that going to cost?
Yes.
So your answer should answer that question, and that should go away.
Yes.
And we're going to have a substation, in the process of having a substation at Venice High School for the Venice Police.
Yes.
And are we looking at doing something at Sarasota High?
So when we, when we have this department established-
Yes.
-we will be a very collaborative community partner.
Good.
And so we will open our, we will send open invitations. We will work with all of the agencies in this area to ensure that we do what's right for the kids, for the school district. And that is our goal. And when I sit here, sure as shooters I sit here, that is our goal. So we, it's all about protecting children and the families and our staff while they're here. So the more interaction we have with our partner agencies, whether they're law enforcement or not, and inside our schools, makes a whole lot of sense. And so we will move in that direction on every level. And so absolutely, the more interaction we can have, and we're going to reach out to, and we're going to train together, and we will ask our law enforcement agencies to get their regular patrol officers into our schools on a regular basis, because it makes a whole lot of sense to have their regular patrol officers familiar with our school sites before a critical incident unfolds.
So that alleviates the question and the emails that we're getting regarding our continued relationship with our police department and our sheriffs.
So, you know, with the sheriff's department, with the other law enforcement agencies, it is about, from my perspective, I will extend a warm and open invitation for them, to work with them on every single level for the benefit of the children and our visitors and staff. So we, in order to provide the right service for Sarasota County, we have to be participative. We have to be collaborative. And that's how we best service this community. There can't be, we can't be, you know, working our own silo for whatever reason. We have to be collaborative and very much engaged. And so that's our plan on every level.
Shirley?
And I know our target date is to have these officers in place by the beginning of school year. But, you know, I want to make sure that we do it right, not necessarily that we do it fast. And I think, I mean, we have to apply to, is it FDLE, to even become a-
So we've already started that process. We are reactivating the necessary requirements or documents that are already have been in place, that have been on file with FDLE. And so we are meeting, I just got off the phone with FDLE before I came over here. And so they have been enormously supportive and helpful, FDLE. And so working with them, identifying the criteria, the standards that we have to meet, how we get there, how we can get there, we absolutely will do everything right. There's going to be no cutting shortcuts for the benefit of everybody. We want to make sure that we keep the superintendent and the school district and all of you, you know, we want, this will be successful. And there are timelines associated with this that are challenging. But we, in the end, will have a very comprehensive police department that has met all of the criteria. And just for me, I'm not the type of person that just believes in meeting criteria.[1744.83]